Okay, everybody, it's a little after seven fifteen, so let us, um... Okay, I need you to call to order on our special call meeting and roll call, Jennifer. Councilwoman Hope Weems, present. Councilwoman Jim Cleveland, and Councilwoman Shaniqua Ashton.
Present.
Adam is absent. Okay, thank you. All right, um... We're going to start with the revision of the language access plan, and Dale, would you explain that?
Sure. We actually had this on our last meeting. It is to keep, uh, make compliance with the DCA requirements for our CDBD grant. After we adopted the language access plan, we got notification from the state that there was an additional sentence or two that they wanted to put in the access plan. And so what we're doing tonight is adopting a resolution to add those several lines or sentences to our language access plan. Justin, is that about?
That's it. It's just a record keeping notification saying that we will maintain the records in the city clerk's office and they are available for public inspection. That's all. It's just a... I think that's actually what it says.
I think actually we have to do this so that we are in compliance with getting our grant.
Right.
Saying that.
Yeah, keeping com- The language access plan is the exact same language access plan that you had in your last month's document. The only change is what's shown on that resolution. It's a couple of sentences changed. That's the same.
Okay, so I will need a motion to pass this?
Motion to approve.
Second? Second. All in favor? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, B, there's a special election, and I'm gonna let Thomas talk about that.
The Monday night Board of Elections certified the independent amendment and the policy of the city to pass the resolution to authorize that election. And so I am grabbing the resolution. I got the ballot language earlier today. And it's not gonna be a regulation that we all should know.
I'm sorry, Thomas, you have a soft voice.
Do you all want the elections here?
Here.
Well, the elections are the actual, um... There we go. The, the actual pre-election work, um...
Early voting.
Early voting, thank you. It will be held at Jackson County's election board over off of, I think it's Gordon Street.
Yeah.
Uh, they'll have that, and then the actual election will be held in this, in this room here. There will be an advertisement sent over to Mr. Bobbington, and he'll have it in his paper next, next week.
That's much better. Sorry, Thomas, there you go.
So this is required by the state to have a special election. We need to pass the, this resolution that says, basically, we're going to run and have a special election.
Motion to approve special election.
Let me read the legislation of the, um... Whereas the Jackson County Board of Elections has received and certified petitions to recall Mayor Theresa Kennerly and Councilmember Jim Cleveland. Whereas the city is required to call for an election to allow the voters of the city of Hushton to consider the following questions. Judge Theresa Anne Kennerly, may I be recalled or removed from public office on the grounds that said official has, while holding public office, conducted herself in a manner which relates to and adversely affects the administration of his or her office and adversely affects the rights and interests of the public on the grounds that such official has violated his or her oath of office and is guilty of failure to perform the duties prescribed by law, yes, no? So Jim Cleveland, councilmember, be recalled or removed from public office on the grounds that said official has, while holding public o- public office, conducted himself, hurt himself, in manner which relates to and adversely affects the administration of his office and adversely affects the rights and interests of the public and on the grounds that such official is guilty of failure to perform the duties prescribed by law, yes, no? Whereas the Jackson County Elections and Voter Registration Director has advised that recall elections should be held on January fourteen, twenty twenty. Therefore, be it resolved that there shall be a recall election on January fourteen, twenty twenty. Be it further resolved that recall elections should be held at the Hushton Depot. Be it further resolved that early voting will be held at the Jackson County Elections and Registration Office, four forty-one Gordon Street, Jefferson, Georgia, beginning on Monday, December twenty-three, twenty nineteen, and ending on Friday, January ten, twenty twenty. The office is open Monday through Friday from eight AM to five PM. However, will, will be closed on December twenty-four, twenty-five, and January one for the holidays. Be it further resolved, the city clerk is hereby directed to post the notices and run the advertisements required by law resolved this fifth day of December, twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Now I'll need a motion on that.
Motion to approve the same resolution.
Can we go on this? Can I? We gotta have three votes, module A.
No, we can't.
Okay. So, this is table till Monday?
Is there any chance that Mr. Ledbetter could be there all season?
Mr. Ledbetter can probably be reached by phone, but, um, as everyone has gone circling for Saturday Monday, he is busy dropping Saturday Monday off.
Can we perhaps put it on a Monday vote, knowing that the paper is going to, um, run the ad, and I'll work with the paper to get a special post somehow? Dale?
Yes, May I?
Yes, please.
Does, does it not say ordinances must be passed by three, Thomas? It doesn't, I don't think it says resolutions.
Any, any action the council requires three to vote?
What's the last possible time that you'd have to have an ad?
Best thing to do would be to send it on in and give it left, that way we can put it in the system. And then if something should change at the last minute, it's easier to take it out than it is to put it in. So if you send it on, go out like it's going forward, and then to usually, if something happens, if something changes, it's a lot easier to pull it than it is to place it.
That means we can vote on Monday night?
Yes, you all want to come and get, um... Has it just been by cell phone?
You have something?
I don't have the cell phone number.
I first have one list.
Mr. Ledbetter, this is Thomas Mitchell. You're on speakerphone at the meeting at the Depot. Do you have about three minutes?
I probably think it's crying out.
But it came from your phone.
No, it didn't.
Your problem was just that they are pleasing.
I'm gonna try and see. Adam, Adam?
Yes.
This is Dale Hall of the City of Hushton. We have you on speakerphone here at the meeting. Uh, do you have a few moments if we can speak with you?
Get ready.
All right, hold on. I'm gonna hand you over to Thomas Mitchell, the attorney.
Mr. Ledbetter, I understand that, um, due to your, um, job function for the U.S. Postal Service, through the time of year that you can't be here at the meeting tonight, um, are you outside the jurisdiction of Hushton?
No.
You're in Hushton?
Yes.
All right. Is there any possibility that you can stop by City Hall anytime in the next fifteen minutes? Here's why I'm asking. All right, here's why I'm asking. As you know, under the charter, we need three affirmative votes to take any action here at the city. Because of one of the resolutions involves a recall election, uh, Mr. Cleveland and the mayor, um, are not, are disqualified from voting, and that leaves only, uh, two council members, and we really need dual presence in order to adopt that resolution.
Will you hear my?
All right, thanks, sir.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna take about a six to seven minute break. Will you see Mr. Ledbetter come in now that we're going to adjourn? Where y'all can just talk amongst yourselves. What? There's dusts in him this night? I thought I just maybe missed the sign up sheet. So while we're all here, does anyone want to explain why we don't have a sign up sheet for public input for our work session? We'll do that when work session starts. It would be too late to sign up, I suppose. Okay, everybody, let's get ready again. Okay, B?
Thank you.
I am so sorry.
No, it's okay.
Okay, I'm gonna start again with B, and Thomas, do you need to reread it?
Yes.
Whereas the Jackson County Board of Elections has received and certified petitions to recall Mayor Theresa Kennerly and Councilmember Jim Cleveland. Whereas the city is required to call for an election to allow the voters of the city of Hushton to consider the following questions. Judge Theresa Anne Kennerly, mayor, be recalled or removed from public office on the grounds that said official has, while holding public office, conducted herself in a manner which relates to and adversely affects the administration of his or her office and adversely affects the rights and interests of the public and on the grounds that such official has violated her oath of office and is guilty of failure to perform duties prescribed by law, yes, no? So Jim Cleveland, councilmember, be recalled and removed from public office on the grounds that said official has, while holding public office, conducted himself in a manner which relates to and adversely affects the administration of his office and adversely affects the rights and interest of the public and on the grounds that such official is guilty of failure to perform his duties prescribed by law, yes, no? Whereas the Jackson County Elections and Voter Registration Director has advised that the recall elections should be held on January fourteen, twenty twenty. Now therefore be it resolved that there shall be a recall election on January fourteen, twenty twenty. And be it further resolved that this recall election shall be held at the Hushton Depot. And be it further resolved that the Jackson County Elections and Voter Registration will conduct this election in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement for the conduct of city elections. And be it further resolved, early voting will be held at the Jackson County Elections and Registration Office, four forty-one Gordon Street, Jefferson, Georgia, beginning on Monday, December twenty-three, twenty nineteen, and ending on Friday, January ten, twenty twenty. This office is open Monday through Friday from eight AM to five PM. However, will be closed December twenty-four, twenty-five, January one for the holidays. And be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to post the notices, run the advertisements required by law resolved this fifth day of December, twenty twenty. Will be signed by, uh, provided it passes, Hope Weems, councilmember, Adam Ledbetter, councilmember, Shaniqua Ashton, councilmember, attested by Karen Butler, Assistant City Clerk, approved at the form by Thomas Mitchell, city attorney.
Okay, now we need a motion on what you just read.
Motion to adopt special election resolution.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Cut. All right. Now we need to adjourn out of our, uh, special call meeting, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Last second?
Sorry.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to go into our work session. I'm gonna call it to order, um, and roll call, Jennifer. And can you add Adam to the special call meeting? Thank you very much. Councilmember Adam Ledbetter?
Present.
Councilwoman Hope Weems?
Present.
Council, Councilwoman Jim Cleveland?
Present.
And Councilman Shaniqua Ashton?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, um, I know that our agenda is a little bit different tonight. Um, there was some research done and found out that our, um, ordinance told us how we were to have an agenda. It was very old, but it does not have the pledge in it, it does not have a prayer in it, and it does not have citizen input. So the only way we can change this ordinance is to vote on it on Monday night. Am I correct?
Does that mean we need a motion to amend the agenda, correct?
We, we have to vote on this ordinance.
No, I get what you're saying. I asking is, this is, this is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Does that mean at this point, if you want a motion to, we need to present a motion to amend the agenda?
Uh, Monday night.
Well, the agenda, we're talking over the agenda now, right? So why do I have to wait until Monday night to amend the agenda?
Because it's an ordinance, and I can't go against the ordinance. I would love to-
Well, now, how long have you been going against the ordinance?
I have, I have, you're exactly right. But I cannot. Now that it's brought, been brought to my attention, I cannot. Now, Monday night, we can vote on it and get back to the way it was.
So that means we're gonna miss a whole citizen input session because it's been overshadowed for how many years now?
I don't know, dear. I did it, I did it myself, and I did prayer and pledge allegiance in there and the citizen input.
Ms, Mr. Hall, you've been in the city legislature now for six months, right?
That's right.
You, you read over the, the charter and the city ordinance multiple times, right? How did you miss it? How did you have the same, the same issues go on or the same thing go on for this long? And now, today, when the citizen input is required or needed, we decided at this moment, we're not gonna do it. We're just, we're gonna enforce the ordinance at this moment.
Uh, excuse me, but I think that you were the one that said-
I did that, and I said it. So if I found it, how did you miss it? How did you miss it who's been there all this long?
Because I didn't look it up.
How did you miss it? And it's your job.
Well, it is what it is. There's nothing I can do about it, Shaniqua. I would love to have prayer, and I would love to have a flag, be able to say the pledge of allegiance, and have citizen input. But you have brought it to my attention, so therefore I have to do what ordinance says.
So you enforce it now.
I have no choice. You showed it to me.
I get it. So, but, I showed it to you. How many years?
It doesn't matter.
How many times have you, how many times have you gone?
We have, I'm not gonna do this with you.
You don't have to do anything with me.
It's not in there. We can vote on it Monday night. That's all I can do.
That's all you can do.
That's all I can do?
That's all you can do at this point.
Yes, sir.
You've done nothing to this point, but to this point.
I couldn't do anything. We didn't have any meetings to vote on, Shaniqua.
Hey, you'll have it Monday anyway. Well, you are in.
We can't have any input from both ordinance.
You can't have any input on Monday either. If we amend the agenda, we're gonna do ordinance.
On Monday?
Yeah.
As a city council meeting?
So it's a whole miss, a whole month of, of miss?
I can't help it. You brought it to my attention. I have to do what you brought me. And I can't just make up and do what I want to.
Well, you've been doing it.
I followed agendas beforehand, and I don't appreciate it, Shaniqua. I knew that the best I know how to do. You brought it to my attention.
You're right, because I'm doing the job that I was elected to do by the citizens who put me here.
Well, you better lower your voice.
I don't have to lower anything.
Yes, you do.
No, you're not.
All right, approval of the minutes?
I want approval.
We don't need you to approve. I need approval of the minutes on November the seventh, work session and public hearing. And then we, if it's Z, I have any changes on that? Okay, and then your regular meeting minutes on November the twelfth. Is there anything that needs to be changed on that? Okay, whole business? There is none? New business? Um, consideration of criticized final plaque, phase one of that. Justin, you wanna talk about that?
Uh, yes, ma'am. This is the final plaque for Christmas, phase one. Um, this is a, it's basically a formality that the council has to approve it so they can start selling the lots. It has gone through the plan review and the preliminary plating review process, and that went through the planning commission and the council beforehand. It gives them, um, right about there and start, you know, building and working on their stuff according to their P E D development. Um, and this is so that they can start selling the lots. So, uh, they're at a point now where they have submitted aspilts and the final plaque, and they're here for the council's approval.
Okay. If anybody has any questions on that, Justin, this is you.
I will add that these final plaques have been reviewed by staff and have by review, have been reviewed by our engineering consultants. Staff included, um, the Planning Zone Director and myself, and I believe Water and Sewer even took a look at those also. So we have had our professionals engineer to hire to do that and brought it forward again for, that meets all the requirements that are-
for, I need all the requirements that are set forward in our votes to be approved.
Okay, if anybody has any questions, you can ask Justin or Adam. Otherwise, we'll move down. And be prepared on the, uh, final plaid, please. Number two. Implementation of the G A S B eight eight nine eight nine.
This is known as the G A S B, um, G A S B regulations, and the state periodically puts new, uh, items that are required to be adopted by, uh, state departments, financial departments. These relate directly to generally accepted accounting principles. There are two resolutions that are required to be. One is related to debt, and the other one is related to, uh, accounting for incurred costs. These are mandated by the state. Herbage is sent by the state. We're bringing it forward to you to, uh, for consideration. If you weren't happy to answer any questions you may have on this, you will have, uh, they're put forth in documents as they set, as they're set. And again, they're mandated by the state.
Thank you. We have a lot of that, Helen.
Yeah, they, they, yeah.
Okay, number three. Confirmation of appointment of the Public Development Director.
Okay, uh, this is directly related to a position, the Public Development Director, that will be related to the budget. So this ties in basically with the budget. We're going to be hearing, considering the budget on Monday. This, if the budget is recommended for approval and approved with this position in the budget, then you could move forward on this. If the budget decides that it is not moved forward as it's written and there are some changes, or that this position is removed from the budget, then it's not a consideration. However, I do have the classification and title set in the books. This was an internal applicants only, and I had that man for, uh, a week to see who would apply for that. We did have one applicant that met all the requirements of that position. And you see that the organizational chart that's proposed that was put in the budget that was, or budget was, uh, formulated around is in here, so...